All right, welcome to the regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls. It is 5:30, Monday, August 3rd, 2020. If you would all join with me, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, according to Minnesota statute 13D dot 021, it allows a meeting to be conducted by telephone or other electronic means under the following conditions. The mayor has determined an in-person meeting or a meeting conducted under section 13D dot 02 is not practical because of a health pandemic. The mayor and all councilors participating can, in the meeting, can hear one another and can hear all discussion. Attendance by the public is not feasible due to a health pandemic. At least one member of the city council is physically present at the regular meeting unless unfeasible due to the health pandemic. And all votes are conducted by roll call, however, that will not be necessary since we are all present today. Also, with the governor's order EO 20 dash 82, we need to have face coverings on inside the room with the exception of if you're testifying before the council. With that being said, our first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. There are two additions. The first would be consider removal of a city beach committee member, and the second one would be to discuss the canceling of the Fourth of July activities that have been delayed towards Labor Day weekend. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the agenda with the additions.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call a question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries 5-0. Next, we'll go to the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes of Monday, July 13th, 2020. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes. We have a motion by Councilor, I forgot your name, Buller.
Again?
Yes. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. We have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries four for the motion and one abstention. Next is the minutes of July 20th, the regular city council minutes. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the minutes of Monday, July 22nd, the public hearing and input meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes. We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries 5-0. And finally, we have the regular city, or I'm sorry, the special city council meeting of July 27th. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none, Chair would call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries 5-0. Next, we'll go to the transfers and payments of claims. The first transfer is going to the general fund from the 812 lodging tax fund in $213.93. Our accounts payable, our claims, City of International Falls regular claims, $1,439,160.73. Airport commission claims, $80,211.28. Runway reconstruction phase one claims, $49,870. Airport reconstruction phase two claims, $2,022,628.21. And runway reconstruction project phase three claims in $85,895 even. For a total payable claims of $3,677,765.22. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the resolution for the payments of claims.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to the audience. Is there anybody that wants to bring something to the attention of the audience that is not on the agenda? Please, if you would come up to the microphone.
Absolutely, you may, yes.
If you take the microphone, that would be great.
So, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I believe there's a few of you that probably wanted to hear from me about a few things. What I'm gonna talk, yes. I'm sorry, Jim Lenham from the owner of the Holiday Building, Lenham Properties, and also the Outdoorsman's Headquarters and the Jug Lickers. Sorry about that, Leo. So, there's a few things that I think, I don't know that this is the proper place to air some of this or not, I'm not really sure, but because there's things that are, there's some stuff out there, there's rumors and that that have been said that I think does affect some things. One of them would be, and I heard this from somebody, that the Holiday Building had 40 leaks, the floors were so uneven, people couldn't stand on it, and things like that, that is so ridiculous that I couldn't even believe I was hearing it. And it also was insinuating that somehow Julie and I have not kept the building up. So I'm here to inform everybody that the type of lease that we have with Holiday requires them to do all the repairs and maintenance. We have never received a letter from Holiday asking us to do anything, period. So, in fact, the repairs and maintenance are not being done. I have a lot of pictures of things that are just atrocious, and it's not being done. Now, again, is this the right place to air it, but because I had heard that, well, we weren't taking care of the building, maybe there was some council people that thought we were just letting something go. That couldn't be further from the truth. So our contract with them clearly states that I can only enter the property with a proper purchase order or sales invoice, which I have done with my partner with J&amp;J Contracting, and we have actually patched one roof leak and some other things that had come loose in the building, some trim and that.
That's not appropriate for you to be speaking at this time.
So, I just wanted to get that cleared up, that there was no truth to this, that the building's having all these issues, and if it was having issues, it wasn't something that we had let go. That certainly was not true. I think my other frustration has been maybe somewhat, maybe some of it's my own fault that I didn't maybe speak to you earlier too, that it's been, it's been an honesty, transparency, and decency issue for me with Holiday Circle K. So when I, as I learned about this, I reached out to them. Since that time, I have had nothing but them tell me stories that were not true. As of today, again, I've reached out to the person that is supposed to be the real estate manager for our location. They will not get back to me. They will not get back to me. I thought the decent thing to do when they were starting the project was to talk to me. Hey, Jim, can you accommodate us? Can you help us? Will you knock the building down? Will you build us a new building? Whatever. That never happened. Again, this may not be the right place, but I think it also though sets the tone a little bit for what is, what's going on. That never happened. They've been difficult, to say the least. And again, not returning calls. It's unfair, it's unfair to us because we don't know what our future holds. If they were planning these things, that's all fine, but they should have brought us in the process and we should have seen if we could work through something. The way this thing has went down has been frustrating from multiple angles. The other thing I just want to address a little bit is the trials and tribulations that the small business people of this community are up against. I have been in retail now, I started with Ivan Stewart at 15, I've been in retail for 43 years in this town. I probably know retail as good as anybody in this town. I'm telling you, the local business people are hurting. They're dangling. Speaking for myself specifically, our sales peaked in the late 90s and early 2000s. They're down a very substantial amount. There isn't much more a lot of people can do, and they're right on that line. And I bring up taxes because I had my good friend Jay Barkowski call me here last year, and he said, Jim, my taxes went up, went up 98 percent, my real estate taxes. How much did yours go up? I said, I don't know, I'm gonna check. One of ours went up over 150 percent, and the other one went up over 240 percent. These are headwinds that small local businesses are facing. And I think those types of things should influence your decisions when you're making, when you're making these decisions. That should be a part of it, it really should. You know, the pie is not getting bigger. We all know that. The pie is not getting bigger. So, when somebody new comes in, if there's no other supply that goes away, somebody's not gonna make it, or they're gonna be dangling on the edge, not making any money. So if the pie isn't growing, which we know it has not been. And it was also brought to my attention that some of the councilor members may have been mistaken, thinking that my location was gonna automatically be closed, and that we're only adding two pumps. I never said we were closing it. So I don't know where that came from either. I don't know, I had just heard this, that there was people that maybe didn't understand that, you know, you're adding more than two pumps. You're adding a lot of pumps to a market that already is fully served. You know, the other thing that I think that I have a hard time with is when government starts picking winners and losers with things. I know you have a fine line that you have to walk. I get that. You really do. But, do you want only corporate in International Falls? Do you want any small business people left? You have the power to do things, yes and no. You do. So when you're picking winners and losers, people get hurt. Phil Paulbeck wants, still would like to have been in the liquor business. This council voted the big miners, massive grocery chain, a liquor license, and drove him out of business. He had no chance of making it. That council made that decision. It did. You know, I appear to you here today in a sweaty faded t-shirt and my roughed up work boots, and I'm not, I can't bring in five lawyers in white shirts and suits, as they So, you have a lot to think about. I think the other thing that has kind of bothered Julie and I is that somehow, and I had heard this again, that we're upset with the Baldwin family. That couldn't be, that's completely incorrect as well. Martha was one of Julie's best friends, and we dearly miss her. My boys played hockey with their boys. Jerry and I are friends, and we've all been friends, and we hung out with these people for years. This isn't personal to us. And I wanted that to be clear, because as far as I'm concerned, I can't say from there on, but they're still our friends. We still miss Martha a lot. And, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council under open business, or under audience? Hearing none, there is an opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. We'll go under the consent agenda, approve a payment of $445 for online tuition classes for the city attorney to participate in the 2020 Criminal Justice Institute for Continuing Legal Education Credits. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda?
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Nelson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. There's no discussion under the consent agenda. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to item number one on the agenda, which is, oh, I mixed up my paperwork. Consider removal from the city beach committee. This last weekend, there was a Facebook post that went around our community. It had, as of this morning, 253 comments that were offensive, vile, and bullying in nature. With that being said, it wasn't just the person that is sitting on the city beach advisory committee, it was also members of our community. And I just, in the letter that I wrote to the council, and that has been prepared, I just wanna accent the final sentence, sentences of what I wrote. "We, as adults, are models for our children. Cyberbullying is real, and oftentimes, it's two-sided, as the case was here. We should not be getting enjoyment from other people's pains. We are all struggling through COVID-19, and how that manifests itself is different for everyone." With that being said, we do have, hold our staff, our elected officials, and those that are appointed to boards and commissions to a standard, and I think it's been missing here. So I would request that we remove Laura Manca from the city beach advisory committee. Chair would entertain a motion to that effect.
I promise.
We will, if we have a motion on the floor. Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to open the discussion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Nelson. Do we have a second?
I'll second. For sake of discussion, I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilor Deech. If you'd like to come up, grab the microphone, and you can speak for yourself.
Thank you, I would like to speak for myself. I see your last paragraph is about COVID-19. Not only COVID-19, but also personal issues, medical issues, and yes, I do apologize for the comments on Facebook. I went a little overboard, and I do apologize for that. However, let's reflect on the city beach. So, May 16th, there was a, well, there was a governor order, Governor Walz, along with a mayoral order, that the beaches in Minnesota would be closed due to COVID-19. May 16th, Ashley Silvers went out to city beach. The only reason I know this is because she posted it on Facebook. She says she was strictly under quarantine, strictly under quarantine due to medical reasons or whatever reasons. But she went to city beach, and she had a great time, and she posted all over Facebook. I approached Mayor Harley Droba on May 22nd and asked him about this issue, that there was a violation. What did he do? He rolled his eyes at me. On May 22nd, 2020, we were advised that there would be an emergency city beach meeting, held at 1 o'clock in the afternoon at city beach, because the governor opened up beaches in Minnesota. And the camp hosts arrived at the beach because the beach hosts, camp hosts, could now go fishing and do fishing guiding in Rainy Lake. So the camp host came to International Falls to stay at city beach for the summer, which was approved by the city beach committee. So now, we went to the meeting at 1 o'clock. We had quite a few people there. Mayor Harley Droba, city administrator, I don't remember if Ted Brokaw was there, Bill Mason, myself, other members of the city beach committee. We spoke about opening city beach, and we made decisions that we would open city beach. This was 1 o'clock on a Friday afternoon. I asked Mayor Droba when the next city beach meeting would be. Some of the people had already dispersed because we had made our decisions, but we didn't say when we wanted the next meeting. Mayor Harley Droba said it would be the third Wednesday in June, 1 o'clock in the afternoon at city beach, which would make it June 17th. I said, great. Mayor Harley Droba got on his motorcycle, it was 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, I don't know what time, on a Friday afternoon, right before Memorial Weekend. He had weekend plans with his family, I assume, so did the rest of us, so he wanted to begin those weekend plans. We opened city beach, I'm sure a lot of people went. Then around June 6th, Tony Corpi posted pictures of five or six girls on the rocks at city beach. The rocks say, keep off. I asked Tony Corpi, I said, why would you do this? It says, keep off. My daughter used to be a lifeguard. Many times, she had to use the microphone to tell kids to stay off of the rocks. If someone were to fall and injure themselves, I'm sure they would gladly sue the City of International Falls and want their medical expenses paid for. It says, keep off. Ted Brokaw was supposed to repaint it, but he hadn't gotten to it, because I believe he was on vacation. She also posted pictures of her children on personal property, owned by Dick Koneman. I know this for a fact because Dick Koneman is my neighbor. He has some Jeeps on there, I asked him about purchasing those Jeeps. They look very nice. He said, yeah, why don't you go over there and check them out? I'd like you to purchase them. So I did, but I had his permission. I don't want to purchase the Jeeps. Their glass is broken, they're rusty, they're in terrible shape. But, Tony Corpi took her children there and put pictures, and I know this fact because they're on Facebook. So she took pictures with the Jeeps, she took pictures of the container. Dick Koneman, he should issue trespass against Tony Corpi, but he hasn't as of yet. He may, I have no idea. So then, June 17th, the third Wednesday of the month, we're supposed to have a city beach meeting. I asked Robin Bierquist to attend this meeting because she's highly educated in playground equipment, because Mayor Harley Droba has said, we're gonna look at playground equipment, because the city beach committee has acquired money since 2016 that we have not spent on playground equipment. So now, we're finally going to look at playground equipment. We're not going to purchase it, but we're going to decide. Nobody shows up at this meeting except Robin Bierquist and myself. We talk about playground equipment. She has pictures of structures that are on sale. She goes, let's walk over and see where you would like to place the structure at city beach. Some of the playground equipment right now is in the beach area, it's right in the beach area, on the sand, in some grass. It's also in the sun. Robin Bierquist says, maybe we should put it here in the shade, in this area. There's plenty of space, let's count out the steps. Good idea. It's in the shade, the little kids will be able to play on the structure and not burn their hands. They'll like to play on it. It's also in the campground area, so campers can monitor their children, because I certainly would hate to see a little child be on the playground and then run into the lake and drown. We can't have many lifeguards right now because of COVID-19, there wasn't training. There's only a select amount of lifeguards, so I believe Bill Mason set up 11 to 6, 11 to 5, whatever time the lifeguards can attend. Signs are posted, swim at your own risk. So we have the beach open for those that don't have cabins, those that can't go to Canada and enjoy their cabins. So, no meeting. So then, July comes along, we're supposed to have a meeting the third Wednesday of the month. I email the city administrator, ask him, are we scheduled for a meeting, because nobody showed at the June meeting. He did not get back to me because he's very busy. It's Highway 53, COVID-19, there's lots going on. Nobody got back to me. No email, no phone calls. I call Wednesday to the city, I don't know who I spoke to, Betty Bergstrom or whoever works in the office, maybe Emma. And they said, oh, the mayor went out to city beach meeting. Oh, it's unfortunate that we have no communication, lack of communication, no email, no phone calls. Did anybody show up at the July meeting, July 15th? I highly doubt it, except for Mayor Droba. It is very lack of communication. I did call the city administrator, we had an hour-long conversation about the lack of communication, because Mayor Harley Droba, he works a job, he works maybe two jobs, I don't know, three jobs. He has a family. He's the mayor of City of International Falls. Maybe the city beach committee is too much for him, and he needs to delegate. Maybe somebody else needs to be in charge of the city beach committee. I also looked at past records. So this one here, March 27th, 2019, says that Boise Safety Grant in 2016, $2,000. 2017, $3,000. On this form, which is an account inquiry, and it goes until 2019, nothing in 2020. The $2,000 is on this form, but the $3,000 is not. There's $3,000 missing from the city beach fund. It should be looked into. So yes, I went overboard the other night on Facebook with Tony Corpi, I apologize, I have not seen the 230 posts. I blocked Tony Corpi, I blocked Lindy Meltler, I blocked Danielle Schremon, or whatever her name is. Yes, they were very cyberbully against me also. Again, I have, you know, I have different issues going on. Not just COVID-19, personal issues and medical issues. I was asked to be on the city beach committee by Sean Mason, the mayor at the time, because we were redoing the city beach house. We did a lot of work. It came a long ways. It wasn't a very nice building to go to. But right now, when I go out to city beach, I hear a lot of comments. This is a great park. Wow, this is very nice. Somebody asked me, how about having senators serve rake the beach? Well, maybe, but maybe they're not working. I called the senators to serve. They said, well, not right now, because usually Doug Johnson does it. But most likely because of COVID-19, he's not doing it, because he has a new heart. He had to have heart surgery. Is he highly susceptible to COVID-19 and death? I would say yes. So city beach has not been raked. Somebody was out there the other day, not leashing their dog. And their dog pooped, there's poop bags out there for their dog. I asked the people if they would leash their dog, there's all kinds of people at city beach, little kids. The first rule at the city beach on the lifeguard stand is no pets allowed. I approached a person, asked him to do that. He would, but the female that he was with did not. I notified the police, because I said I would, because he didn't want to listen to me. There are other people there that stood up for me. Thank you very much. Tourists to the area, people coming to International Falls, people going to city beach, people said, this is a very nice park. Thank you. Thank you, city council.
Do you have any comments? I do believe we should look into $3,000 missing from the city beach fund. Okay, council members, does anyone have any questions for Laura?
I have a question.
Please.
I didn't see the post. What were the comments? Do I get to know?
I'm trying to do everything in my power not to put that out, but it...
I have no idea what the post were, again, it has to do with, it has to do with keep off the rocks, it has to do with not trespassing on the property. Lindy Meltler and other people were very negative towards me also, and I didn't agree with their post, and it probably got a little out of hand, and again, I apologize. Like I said, I've... Like I said, I blocked all these people, but apparently other people have been seeing them, so, and apparently I was very rude. But I do apologize, my stress level was way high.
There were posts about sexual indiscretions, there were posts about other people in our community calling them out, there were also posts that were utilizing, that she was going to be calling the police to apprehend people that were utilizing the City Beach. There was quite a bit of, I had 26, I fielded 26 complaints on Saturday, including other elected officials. I've gotten people that are Rainier residents, I had residents that are from International Falls, I've had multiple members of the school board and teachers that have contacted me about the inappropriateness of what has, and what was transpired. And with that being said, there were, it's not just Laura, and I think that that has to be very clear. It was, it was two ways. It was members of our community being very, very hurtful towards Laura and vice versa. But with that being said, Laura had used her position as a member of the City Beach Advisory Committee to call out...
And it was called, "Keep off the rocks," because it says, "Keep off." But Tony Corpey again, and somebody said, "It's just girls sitting there nice on the rocks." There are many other rocks in International Falls that Rainier likes to sit on, many docks and the other things. Tony Corpey is also on the school board representing our, our school district and our children. She posted, you know, "On the rocks, keep off the rocks," and she also trespasses on Dick Koneman's property. I'm sure you all are very familiar with that because he has slight issues against them.
So the question that has came up from Tricia Hybol, "Does the city have a social media policy in place for staff, elected officials, committees and commission members?" Ken, do you want to take that?
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. The city has discussed adopting a social media policy. We do not have a social media policy in place at present time, but we are exploring options to create one.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, please?
I don't think I could vote yes on this proposal that we just had, without seeing the videos, without knowing what's going on. This is one of these things that we talked about before. We're hit with this as we come into a meeting. We've had no background, many of us probably have not seen the Facebook posts, so we're not really voting on something that we're really familiar with. And if we don't have a policy, which we should have, if we don't have a policy, I think this is mute.
Okay, fair enough. And if you want, we can table it and I can get a copy of the...
I think that would be wise to table it for the time being.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would agree with that, other than, I don't know that we necessarily, depending on what the actual content is, I don't know that we need a policy against it, depending on what's actually in there, but I'd like to see it.
Okay. So then it would be appropriate to have a motion to table?
I'll make the motion, table.
We have a motion to table from Councilor Deitch. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion?
Can I add something?
Please.
And I do believe we need to show pictures of Tony Corpey and her children as the beach, that the rock says, "Keep off," along with the trespassing issue at Dick Koneman's property.
I don't think the trespassing issue has anything to do with the City Council.
It's not safe there, those vehicles are not safe.
But that's not a City Council issue?
Against white. City Council is not against white.
Sorry, please.
Mayor, if I may, our staff have observed the non-conformity with those vehicles and that container, and we've been proceeding with enforcement action on those, so it's something that's in process. It's not clear if that's on that individual's private property, or if there's some elements of public property that are being encroached on, and so we are exploring that and have been for a period of time, so. Trespass issue though, you know, in that effect, if the property owner doesn't have it posted, my understanding of the law is it has to be posted, and it has to have the property owner's name and a phone number that they can be contacted for that to be effective.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to table to the next meeting. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call a question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the discussion of canceling the 4th of July activities due to, that were supposed to be delayed to Labor Day weekend. If you guys look at the letter that I had wrote, this is, again, the 4th of July activity is, there's three points that I think we have to consider when we're, make the decision to ultimately cancel. First, Cooching County positive cases on July 4th weekend, there were 14 cases and one death. Today, August 3rd, we have 74 cases and three deaths. Our area has not flattened as the curve as we had hoped would have happened by Labor Day weekend. Second is the Executive Order 2082, school districts and charter schools to provide a safe and effective learning environment for Minnesota school students during the school year. It would be irresponsible for the city to have a community gathering days before the students go back to school. It is the goal of all school districts to provide a safe, healthy environment. We should be doing our part as a city to limit excess gatherings. And finally, outdoor gatherings of 250 or more. Unlike crazy days, a city event at Smokey Bear Park would most likely draw more than 250 attendees. It was our hope that the governor's ordiners would be opening things up at this time. However, that was not, is not the case. And with the recent events at the Effie Rodeo, we don't want to highlight our city function on the national news. So I did reach out to the Rotary President last week and kind of discuss that idea with her. We had a difference of opinion, but with that being said, it's, it's difficult to hold that, and this one is ultimately the City Council's decision, so Chair would entertain a motion to cancel the 4th of July activities at this time. We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. So I heard from the audience, we should still have fireworks. The last line of this was, I believe we still can have the fireworks as a celebration for that weekend, and this cancellation would not include the Cooching Labor Day Assembly picnic. International Falls will stand by the Cooching Labor Day Assembly, their decision for their event, as we have with partners, so if they choose to cancel, we'll stand by that decision. If they want to continue on, I think we would stand by that decision as well. So that's, so we would hope that we can still have the fireworks and the picnic would still be going on as scheduled. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, Cooching County requests to appoint persons to the CARES Act Development Grant Committee to approve the mayor's appointments. I would like to appoint Betty Bergstrom to represent the city for the CARES Act Development Grant Fund. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion? Hearing none, call a question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, Cooching County requests to allocate $46,200 or 10% of the CARES Act funding to the Small Business and Nonprofit Relief Grant to pay documented COVID-19 costs. A little background on this one, please, Ken?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city was awarded $462,439 in CARES Act monies, and those monies were distributed from the federal government to the state of Minnesota. Governor Walz distributed that to cities and counties, and our share, based on the formulas that the state established, was $462,439, as I mentioned. One of the things that the governor strongly encouraged, but did not require, is that there be 10% of those funds allocated to assist businesses in the communities due to the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on business. And so to follow up with that, the county had initiated setting up this Economic Relief Grant Fund Committee to award monies to businesses, and they're asking that each of the cities and the county that received monies to contribute 10% of the monies that were contributed to them for this purpose. So the city's share, as I identified on the resolution, or I'm sorry, on the agenda, would be about $46,200, which would be 10% of our CARES Act monies that were allocated to us, applied to this committee, and then the committee would entertain applications to award grant funds to businesses that can document COVID expenditures, or expenditures that were devoted solely to the pandemic costs and lost business. And so I would say that there is a necessity to document what these costs are, and so there's a committee meeting this week. The county had, in fact, went ahead and established the committee, and they've offered each of the cities to contribute members to that, and you just did that by having the deputy city administrator sit in on that committee. And the committee will evaluate applications and the supporting documentation with consultation from Clifton, Larson, Allen, which is a consulting auditing firm, to try and make sure that all the documentary requirements are met as part of this program. So we would be allocating $46,200 to the committee to award in financial assistance to businesses that can document need.
Okay. So the chair would entertain a motion to allocate those funds? Yes.
That would also be added to the $166,000, $240 at the county getting?
Right, and the other cities as well, yep.
I'll make that motion.
So we have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to a resolution approving an application to conduct an off-site gambling for the Rainier Recreation Club on October 16th, 2020, at the Elks Lodge 1599. We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to a resolution approving application for exempt permit for the International Falls Figure Skating Club to conduct a raffle withdrawing to be held on March 21st, 2021, at Bronco Arena.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Deitch. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries. Next is a resolution to approve Minnesota State, I'm sorry, approve State and Minnesota Department of Transportation Routine Maintenance Agreement for Trunk Highway 11, Trunk Highway 53, and Trunk Highway 71. Chair would entertain that motion. We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next is a resolution approving the revision of capital asset amount from $2,500 to $7,500. Administrator Anderson.
Just briefly, Mayor, the city has a policy right now where we classify any assets valued at over $2,500 as a capital asset, and it, and it has to be accounted for separately as a capital asset. And so the Government Finance Officers Association recommendations are to, to have policies in place that govern this. Ours has been unchanged for a number of years, and so this particular resolution would change the capital asset minimum value from $2,500 to $7,500 for any individual item, and it would leave the infrastructure capital asset minimum value of $50,000 the same. And then it also sets a minimum useful life for any capital asset at two years or longer, and I believe the minimum right now is only one year. And so we're asking that the council adopt this, which would reflect the increase in costs over the years for capital equipment, and it also makes it easier to track the capital assets because the smaller items do not have to be accounted for to the level of detail that a more expensive item would.
So the chair would entertain a motion on accepting that resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Nelson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, consider Charter Commission recommendation to reduce the members from 15 to 9. Betty Bergstrom, do you have anything to add on this, on this one?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I did speak with Chairman Taylor today, and we did talk about that. The committee as a whole agreed to request the council seek to reduce that membership due to some lack of participation. People are very busy now, you know, we don't know why they're unable to attend. We've had to cancel meetings, we've had to wait 15, 20 minutes before we get on the phone to get people to attend. So therefore, the ones that have been coming on a regular basis are getting a little frustrated, and they're really excited about moving forward and wanting to improve this document. And so therefore, they're just asking if we could reduce that membership to allow and, you know, have a quorum more often than not.
And Betty, just as a background, were you able to look to find out people that have not been active that would be able to be dropped off by state statute?
We have two members that have not, have not been able to make one meeting at all. So those two, for sure, as per the state statute, we can remove. The others, we would have to probably write letters to, ask their interest, see if, you know, they still would like to be on the committee, or if they just want to attend as liaison, excuse me, members, or, you know, how they would prefer to if they don't believe they're going to be able to attend on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you. So the chair would entertain a motion to approve the recommendation to reduce the members from 15 to 9.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Nelson. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next is to accept the resignation of Ted Saxton from the Library Board of Trustees. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that resignation?
Move with regret.
We have a motion to accept the resignation by Councilor Kraus with regret. Do we have a second? Didn't know so many people wanted him on the library board, holy moly.
He doesn't want to.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next is to approve the mayor's appointment to Library Board of Trustees for a vacant term expiring the end of this calendar year. I did reach out to Diane Adams because she has the people that most, most use the library would make the most sense, and she said that they'll have a discussion at their next library board meeting, and she'll give me a name for the next meeting. So we'll just skip that on the agenda, and we'll have it on our next, next regular city council meeting agenda. Next is to approve the purchase of a 2020 Tracless MT7 municipal tractor from McQueen Equipment for state bid price of $195,250. Equipment for state bid price of $195,250 payable from capital outlay. We have a motion by Councilor Bowler, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus, any discussion?
I think you need to take note that it does have a snowbower, 51 snowbower, it does have spout for loading trucks off it, a coil boom is also included in, and there's some attachments that we discussed, but the last committee only needed, maybe if you'd like to have more attachments, but they didn't really get it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, authorize review comments for the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program, preliminary flood insurance rate map, and the flood insurance, flood insurance study report. Administrator Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see, there's a preliminary flood insurance program map that's been prepared and sent out, and there's a reference to a digital version that's available online at the website. And the purpose for having this on the agenda, they've asked for any review comments that we may have as a local municipality, and changes of a non-technical nature that need to be made. So they wanted that within 30 days of the date of this letter, which is July 9th. So I will complete my review and forward any comments that we have from a staff perspective with contributions from our affected department heads, but I just wanted to have an opportunity for the city council to offer any comments if you've had an opportunity to look at that. It's a fairly sizable document, very technical in nature, and it probably doesn't have a lot of impact for the city of International Falls. This would affect communities that have a lot of lakes, which, where the lake levels adjust a lot, and a lot of development along the lakes. There's a flood zone where you can't build in that in minimum elevations, and so that's where this particular study comes into play. With our very well-defined channel for rainy river, while that height adjusts because of what the dam, the amount of water going through the dam, we don't have a lot of properties that are affected from a flood hazard area standpoint, so, but I just was looking for any comments that the council might have. I would share those with them within the 30-day timeline that they've requested. So if nobody has anything, then I would just let the council know that we'll complete our staff review, and if we have any changes, we'll forward those on to the contacts at FEMA, and I'll make sure the council gets a copy of what we sent out.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other business to come before the council?
Mayor?
Please.
The only thing that I would like to get out there, and I never did a formal resignation, I don't know if that's necessary, but as of August 11th, I am closing on my house.
Okay.
So I will not be in attendance at the August 10th meeting, simply because I'll be resigning as of the next day, but I did want to, everyone pretty much knew it, but I would like to make that official.
All right. Sounds good. Will you give us a letter?
Yeah.
Because they made me write one.
Does it have to be typed?
No.
Just write it right now? Okay, I'll type it.
Yeah, and just turn it into the, so, that actually brings up an interesting thing that we have talked about a little bit, is we have known that Councilor Nelson would be purchasing a home and that she'd be moving out of the area. The timing is relatively good, given the set of circumstances, what we're at in an election year. So as of right now, we have had one person sign up for councillor-at-large. If we only have the one person sign up for councillor-at-large, it would make perfect sense, as we did for Councilor Kraus, to appoint that person, because after the election, they would be the elected person for this seat anyways. In the event that we have multiple people that run for councillor-at-large, I don't think that it's fair to give anybody one, an advantage in the campaign or in the election. So I wanted to have a formal discussion, I think I have talked to at least one councillor, that it would make sense to have, have a conversation of utilizing people that had applied in the past for the position that councillor Nelson's in. Now that we do have a resignation, we'll have to look at that moving forward, but I think it would make sense to have a past city councillor that is not running for city council to just fill in through the course of this year if we have more than one applicant. If we have one applicant, it makes perfect sense to put that person in that role. So we'll have more discussion at our committee at the whole meeting on how we want to move forward with this, but by the, oh no, the next day is when closing starts, or closing for the position is, is on Tuesday. So we'll have more information on Monday, but we'll be able to start looking at how we want to replace that. So thank you for, for being here and being with us, and it's been a wild roller coaster. Okay, are there any reports of boards, committees, department heads?
Mayor?
Please.
We're going to get into this later on when we talk about some blight reports. My only question is, are we following up on vehicles that are not being removed or licensed that basically have been sitting in the lots or yards since the spring?
I do not know the answer to that. City Attorney, do you have any information on that?
I do. Mr. Mayor and Council, there, as Administrator Anderson knows, I've been kind of hamstrung the last couple of weeks because my assistant, Sue Johnson, has been gone for what we thought was going to be one week, ended up being two weeks, awaiting the birth of a granddaughter down in the Twin Cities. So I haven't been able to generate any official complaints or things. We did get one criminal case started with regard to an automobile before she left, and that case is coming up in court a week from today. We'll be the first hearing on that. I met with Jared Baldwin today, and we've been meeting almost probably every other day for the last month or more. And the progress has been tremendous. There've been over 160 citations issued for vehicle issues on properties, and all but about 20, a few over 20 have been resolved. Of those that have have been resolved, about half a dozen. We have things in progress where we've given them extensions of time, and they're starting to work on correcting the problem, but they haven't totally finished it. There are about a dozen, 12 to 15 cases that will be now processing to criminal court, and I expect to get those complaints, we're, we're starting to work on them tomorrow, and we'll be getting a few out each day. And so by the next council meeting in two weeks, I fully anticipate that there'll be probably about 15 pending criminal cases against those people who've been cited but have not taken the corrective action.
Question once again, sorry to rain on your parade coming up, but how about the, and I talked to Administrator Anderson about this also today, have, you been processing any of the homes and garages that doesn't have siding on, people tore it off, and it's either got the wrap on it, or it's got tarp paper on it, there's several around Southern International Falls that I've been kind of harping about since spring, and I see nothing happening with those. Have those been processed still?
Yes, we've been working on those, and there've been letters that have gone out to individuals, and I think, as far as I know, and I don't know if Jared's in the meeting here or not, but as far as I know, between Kelly and Jared, we've been talking with those people, several of them have committed, are in the process to making corrections, and several of them are, again, upcoming, and if they meet the standard to have us bring a civil court action, to have a structure demolished, we may have some of those coming to the council in two weeks at the next meeting.
Okay, my big concern is, we're already into August, and I don't want to wind up like we did last year, where everybody says the weather's our problem, that we can't deal with the rain and maybe snow as it goes on. I think we've got to process these as soon as we can, quickly as possible, so we don't run into that situation again.
Anything else that you have under blight report, or?
Nope, we're good.
Okay. City Administrator, do you have anything?
I do, Mayor, thank you. Just a brief informational item for the council and the public, the corner brat feed that's normally held by the Elks has been canceled due to the COVID pandemic. So we received notification on Friday that they were going to be canceling that. And then I just wanted to remind you all, as well as the public, that there is a primary election in International Falls. It doesn't involve any of the local offices here for the city, but that's on Tuesday, August 11th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. So you can go to your normal polling places to vote in the primary election. If you choose to do an absentee ballot, the last day that you can do that is the day prior, which is Monday, August 10th. So if there's anybody who wants to vote and has concerns about showing up at a polling place because of the pandemic, you can still do a, an absentee ballot as late as Monday, August 10th. And then, just for the council's information, at about 3:00 this afternoon, I did receive a petition from an individual that is requesting the council to consider allowing chickens in the city, and so that came in at 3:00 today, and so we'll be processing that in accordance with the charter provisions, and I have sent a couple of questions to the city attorney shortly thereafter, and so want to give him some time to offer some input, and I'll keep the council advised as we move forward. So there's a couple of different avenues that can be taken regarding that petition, but if it's something that would have to be on the, a referendum question, the last day that we can do that is August 17th, I believe the date was, so, which would be after our next, I'm sorry, I forgot the date. I contacted the county today, and I have the date, it's after the meeting on August 10th, so we can reconsider, I believe it was the 13th, so.
The 17th is our next regular city council meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have a special meeting on the 10th, so.
Okay.
I'll just see how that works out, to see if it's something that we have to, if you want to proceed with, there's a couple of different avenues, and I'll have more information from you on the, for the 10th.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney, do you have anything else to add? Oh, okay. Tricia, did you have something to?
I think Steve was talking on mute.
I'm unmuted now. Thanks, Tricia. No, I don't have anything else to add to what was stated earlier, other than I just think we are making great progress, and Jared Baldwin deserves a lot of credit, he's been really working hard at this, and I think the results show, and yes, there's still problem properties and vehicles that we need to deal with, but we're moving in the right direction, and I think two weeks from today, at the next meeting, we will see even more progress, and I can report on the actions being taken legally against those who have not complied. I did just see, as the meeting was started, the email I got from Administrator Anderson regarding the petition to have a, allow chickens, have that initiative on the ballot, and I haven't had a chance to research it, but I'll be talking with Administrator Anderson about that tomorrow, so that we can get back to the council to probably take action at the special meeting next week.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I think Tricia still wants to talk.
Oh, please.
If I may quickly, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to circle back on Crazy Days and just confirm, right, the event happened. I feel an initial feedback from retailers that it was a success for what it was. I mean, the motto, even that morning when I first walked town to town, I felt like, okay, this is happening, it's all just less. It's less vendors, it was less tables and racks from those who had participated, the chamber had received the masks in from the governor, or Dean, or whoever, all the states taking credit for those. So we had to distribute a box of disposable masks to every Crazy Days participant that we had, so they had those in their stores, as well as other masks for employees. You know, I did an initial loop in the morning, and one kind of lunchtime-ish, did I see people without masks? Yes, I did. I think, you know, as I've been working with businesses this week, part of the dialogue is, you know, how do we find the right way to approach that? Because there are people legitimately allowed and, you know, unable to wear a mask. And so I think everybody is finding their way to temper through that appropriately. A mask is always being offered, or at least pointed out, or asked, or addressed, if not, but then, you know, I think it's my best interpretation through advice from Steve Brob and the governor's office, as well as, you know, they're not looking for the businesses to, or the employees to have to get confrontational with people. Like, you've asked, you've pointed, you've hopefully even given a mask, and whether or not they put it on their face is sort of out of your hands at that point. And different businesses may or may not choose to escort people out of their store, or take it to different levels, but, you know, a best effort is really what's primarily looked at, I think, for the business. So while it wasn't going to be a record-breaking year for retailers, of course, we all knew that going in, I think just comparatively from where their sales had been, it was that boost of a day that they were looking for, so they were grateful to be able to have the event, and so I just wanted to pass that along to you as well. And then I did just have one question, and this might even just be for my own just confusion. So the meeting on August 10th, like the notice in the paper about going to the alleyway, I think I, I thought that it was approved at the last meeting, is this still an open issue with the alley vacation? Are we, I just, right, I'm unfamiliar with the process.
Administrator Anderson, you want to explain?
Yeah, Mayor, briefly, the process, the next step in the process is the Vacation Committee that the city council appointed at the last meeting, which is a committee of three persons that are charged with determining any damages and benefits as a result of the proposed alley vacation will be, they'll be meeting on-site in the block where the alley is proposed to be vacated, between 15th and 16th Streets, and just east of Highway 53. They'll meet at 9:00 a.m. on August 10th to meet on-site, review the site, see what the circumstances, what the conditions look like. Anybody from the public is welcome to attend the site and look at it as well. They will relocate to the city council chambers at 10:00 a.m., and then at 10:00 a.m. they'll have a public input meeting, essentially a public hearing to take any public comments related to the proposed alley vacation. And then, after that meeting adjourns, they will meet as a committee to determine damages that might exceed any benefits to the affected property owners, and then present a report, or prepare a report for presentation to the city council at 5:30 on August 10th. The city council will receive that report, then the charter dictates that we have to wait for a period of seven days minimum, and it will be considered at the subsequent city council meeting on August 17th, where a final decision will be made regarding the damages, the benefits, as well as the actual alley vacation. So that's a summary of the following steps.
Thank you.
All right. Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions? I have nothing. Okay. All right, and so that brings us to audience. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to bring someone, something forward to the city council? Please. Yep.
He's got several questions from different members of the community that have reached out in the last. the community that have reached out in the last week since our last meeting. And the first one for Mr. Schmon, if the affected landowners that are adjacent weren't notified, is there any recourse for them regarding the prior vote being nullified? Because they couldn't put any input in on the subject?
The light's on. You probably have to speak closer to the microphone, but.
Mr. Schmon, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, if there were, the second major landowner adjacent on the property wasn't notified, so they couldn't speak up prior to the vote, is there any recourse for them to get their voice out there, or recall the vote and do it again because they weren't notified?
Well, I'm not in a position to give an opinion on that off the top of my head until I know all the facts.
Okay.
Administrator Anderson, you want to answer the question?
Yeah, Mayor, just for the public's information and to try and address that issue. So as part of the response that I just gave to Tricia Hyville from the chamber on the meeting for the Vacation Committee coming up, we sent notification to everybody within 350 feet of that block, so that all the people on the block and within 300, having property within 350 feet of that block will be notified about the Vacation Committee's meeting at 9:00 a.m. that day, the subsequent public hearing at 10:00 a.m., and then the submission of the report to the council at the following meeting on the 10th. So again, the final decision would be made by the city council at the meeting on August 17th, and the council could take public comment at that meeting. But we have informed all those property owners within 350 feet of that meeting of the Vacation Committee, so that they can offer their input, and a notice was published in the newspaper as well.
But they weren't notified prior to the vote to move forward? They're notified now?
Yes, that's correct.
How does that work to oppose this if no one knows about it until after the vote to move forward?
Matt, if I just, I'm just going to interrupt really quickly. Is, part of the reason I'm sure Mr. Schmon didn't answer is he's the city attorney. You should contact a non-conflicting attorney.
Okay, I just asked, okay.
Does that make sense?
Not really, but okay.
An attorney that won't have, so he can't advise, you know how you hired, some of you hired Steve Nelson? You can't have one attorney advising two conversing adversary parties.
We can't ask the city attorney a question?
I'm sorry, what?
We can't ask him a question, just as a public citizen?
I think you can probably ask him. I just don't know that, I think part of it is going to be, he's not going to be comfortable doing advice.
Okay. Can any of the council members here tell us what statute that you guys needed to follow, or you couldn't talk to us prior to the 27th at 5:30 regarding the subject?
Because I know that. And what you're referencing is, is Matt Corbett had called me and talked to me about it. And when we talked, I said, I couldn't give you an opinion, my opinion on the situation because it was a public hearing that had not happened yet. I think there was a misunderstanding because I said, you can, I don't remember how I worded it, but the city council cannot give you their input to, prior to a public hearing. They have to hear both sides of the issue, which is what happened at the public hearing.
Okay.
And so you could call and voice your concerns to the city councilors, but they can't voice their opinions to you.
Okay.
Until after the public hearing.
So when I talked to Ms. Nelson outside after, she said she was unaware of that, to my understanding, because you said, no one called me, no one talked to me prior.
No one did.
But then you said you also talked to a lot of people that were for it. How could you do that?
No, no, no. I didn't talk to people for it. It's based on my interaction within the community, because there is gossip, you know. People knew that Circle K wanted to come in before the petition came in, before any of that came in. And it's gossip in the community. And then on top of that, it was all the times, honestly, if I could copyright or somehow secure the times I've heard, you know, what's wrong with International Falls, or do you know what International Falls needs?
Yep.
Commonly, that has been it. And I represented that interest. I do want to, before you go further, I really want to just comment how much I appreciate the landowner coming forward, and if, I want to catch you after. And I forget your name already.
Jim Lenham.
Lenham. And I want to clarify too, while I have your attention from the editorial, because I did talk to you on the phone, is my biggest issue was I thought the petition was refuted. And when all of these people were here, you were the only one that stood up. And then I was confronted by five people in the parking lot after the decision had been made, but not here. So the public hearing is where we would expect, or I would expect, I don't want to say we, where I would expect that input. And I know the final decision isn't till August 17th, and I won't be involved in that. But I just want to clarify that when we have community members coming forward after a vote, saying, well, did you consider this? Did you consider this? Did you consider this? And none of that was brought, it's exceptionally frustrating.
Okay, back to your point, we're talking to the community members about hearsay or rumors. How could you talk about that to them when none of these guys could? And I asked you in the parking lot, you said you were unaware.
It was just rumors, you know, at that point. I didn't tell my opinion. It was just kind of hearing back and forth. Oh, yeah, I heard Circle K was coming in, or I heard they wanted to come in, stuff like that. My husband heard it, he's sitting right behind you. He had heard it and brought it to my attention that that was something being discussed, and I didn't hear about it at that point, but it was just listening.
I'm sorry. Can I shout?
I'm done, yeah.
Okay, Mayor.
Yeah.
I think the roadblock here is our verbiage that was used earlier, can't talk about it, because I heard that before too. The verbiage can't talk about it basically means nobody says anything. And I think that is the verbiage that threw us into this complex situation right now.
That's why I didn't contact you, because I'd already been knocked down two times and said, we can't talk about it. So there was no reason to.
You know, and you explained that to me, and I honestly, I didn't have the answer.
Okay. One other thing that had come up prior to us talking to Mr. Nelson, as I was talking to Mr. Schmon, mentioned that we had a petition. At the time, there were 31 names, business owners that were against it, and just won four. And he had made the statement, just opinion, that there's no way this will move forward with 32 businesses opposing it because the council's voted on by the public. There's no way that they can choose to benefit one business versus opposition to 32. Now we've got 53 to one. And you had said that no one stood up in the meeting, well, the petition represents the people as far as I'm concerned. You just took in a petition for the chickens. And I know you're going to treat that petition as those names on that paper represent a person.
As an individual, yes. And what I clarified on Facebook too, and I guess I'll keep clarifying that, is I don't view the town as having 49 citizens. I think there are other citizens, and there were quite a few that were for it, that have been reached out to me. I'm not going to give their personal names because they didn't sign up for this.
Yeah, that's fine.
This show like I did. You know, they didn't sign up for the calls, they didn't sign up for the attacks on Facebook, they didn't sign up for any of it. So I'm not going to give you their names.
Sure.
And, you know, this isn't the final decision. There is going to be more decisions. There was already a vote though.
Yeah, there was a vote.
With information presented. And as I explained on Facebook, is the information in the petition I felt was refuted. You know, there were X number of things that came up, and then Holliday refuted all of those. And then I didn't hear from those other business owners if they still had concerns. And I don't want to just say business owners, I want to say citizens too. Because when you have this concern, you say, I'm concerned about X, and then, for example, that they're going to request tax abatement, if they say, no, you know, I'm really worried because they're going to ask for tax abatement. And then they come back and say, no, we're not asking for tax abatement. It's hard for me to assume that that person is still against this, this action that's going on, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, what was the question then?
In the chamber, well, I don't know, but in the, in the setting that we had last Monday, you were presented with information in that setting.
Mm-hmm.
We presented 48 names against one name.
Right, and I felt.
But that's 48 businesses that are going to take, some will take no hit, of course, some will be wiped out.
I thought I did answer the question, and I'm only really going to repeat it one more time.
So, Matt, I'm going to ask you a question, and I understand that, and I'm not, this is so difficult because we have to make a decision on what's before us. And I know you understand that, because you and I have had very good civil conversations about it. If this is about the small businesses and who's, who's going to be winners and who's going to be losers, when we had a public hearing regarding bringing in a hotel development into our community that's by an outside investor, where were you at that public hearing? Because we didn't.
Probably working, I didn't know.
We didn't, we didn't have, we didn't have, the only people that contacted us in regards to that public hearing was American, Days Inn. It was the ones that are specifically going to be affected. And I do understand that on your petition that you had, you had different businesses all the way across. And I understand, I completely get that. And if we want to go back, I mean, I'm putting myself on the line here too. I've been here with you guys. I've, Matt, I sat right where Jim Lenham is sitting, and when this city council had to make a decision about whether or not the liquor license should go to County Market, I sat in here and I spoke in front of Mayor Anderson, Councillor Roganrude, Councillor Jacksaw, Councillor Kahler, and Councillor, no, I'm sorry, Eklund. And we had that conversation. And I stood up and I said, you know what, this is important for our small businesses. And yes, we did lose businesses immediately. The problem is, is I also have, since I've been in this role, I get it on both sides. Do you know how many people have told me that what we're doing is absolutely horrible for our community and our small business owners? But on the flip side, we're also getting the conversations of, it's about time we have an additional investment into our community. They're not asking for tax abatement. And one of the other things that has came up is the property taxes that Jim, you brought up earlier today, I understand, our property taxes are going up, and they have for a couple of years. The reality is, is if you put a $3 million investment into the community, that's going to lower, that's going to add value to the net tax capacity. That legitimately can lower, a $3 million investment in our community can lower the tax valuation for everybody else in the community. So there are pros and cons to this. I get it. It is, but those are all things that we have to weigh, and there are residents in our community that want to see new investment. And new investment brings new investment.
Did you guys read the submission of estimated expenses that are going to be, that the gas stations have to put in by next April? That were submitted two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Yeah.
At 4.9 million?
Yeah.
That's more than that store's going to cost. That we have to put in, we have to. We don't have a choice.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the property, just like Jim, Jared texted me today. Jerry washed his motorcycle two weeks ago. We don't have any issue with Jared or the Baldwins at all, they're just following the rules. That property, as we talked about last October, for one, you said you never vote for a vacation, things can change. But he also said that Mr. Debonin was doing an excellent job. If you vote no on this project, he's probably got a list of other ones that want to come. That's a 53, a lot on 53. We need a grocery store to compete with Miners. As you probably know, working there, that things are a little out of control, price-wise, how we get treated up here. When COVID started and everything was shut down, the shelves were left empty up here. And we called down there to ask what we could do, as a trucking company, what we could do. And they said that International Falls is going to get serviced last because they're the end of the road. And we sent our trucks down there for nothing, just to pick up, they filled our trailers, we brought it up here. They filled our trailers, we brought it up here. Didn't charge them anything, we just wanted to get supplies to the town. So it's a little disheartening when the corporate giants don't do anything for us. It's a little, guys, who, who put up the movie screen at the school? Kerry?
Yeah.
Yeah. Who donated everything that I know of during the COVID crisis at the beginning, before it was a crisis, now it's really a crisis here. It was all local businesses, local people. Not one, Menards didn't reach out to us, Holliday didn't do anything. PCA did, of course, they do their thing. But I mean, nobody else did anything. So now we're voting to crush a little guy, or two, or three, or four. And you talk about the taxes are going to come down. If we disappear and Jim disappears, the taxes are going up. Because combined, we pay more than what that store is going to pay. And there's room for something else in that location. Mr. Buller, Councillor Buller, when we had talked on the phone, you said that you'd hope there was 20 or so people would stand up. With the names on that list, 48 people stood up. How many do we need to get your vote? Do we need 30? Do we need 40? Do we need 100? I mean, it's, it doesn't, we're trying to figure out how one petitioner names can count. When somebody signs their land tax check, like Green Tech Manufacturing for 28,000, when they sign their name on the bottom of that check, the city cashes that check, because that's a good signature. But when they put their name on our petition, it didn't count for some reason. We're not sure how that works.
I guess I take a petition serious, but I also have, we also have a hearing here at the time, and I like to hear from the people. You're the only one that ever called me, the whole thing.
Okay.
All those people on the petition, only one that called me.
Okay. I just want clarification, if there was like a threshold that we were trying to work towards, okay?
Yeah, I wouldn't say that's a good thing, but if I only had one call.
Okay. Well, when we were here, the.
Or Jim called me too.
When we were here the other day, there was only one party for this project. There was only one party in this room that was for it. There were several that were against it, didn't speak up, but there were several here that were against it. It still got pushed forward. Also, with the petition, we've talked to 53 people, sorry, we dropped information off at 54 places. 53 people signed it. 1171 was the only location that I forgot to go back to until I was writing my notes to talk to them. Otherwise, 100% of the people that we talked to signed it. They were all for business.
But why?
Why did they sign it?
Yeah.
Because we've got 12 gas stations right now within a nine, nine mile radius. We don't need another one. They also are local businesses for the most part, so they don't want to see another one be affected. Plus, as we watched with Stewart's, Stewart's helped the community out more than, you know, more than anybody knows. You don't know, you don't know, well, you might know. I don't know, you know, you see a little bit.
They sponsored my softball team for many years, actually, but continue.
But I mean, they're gone. And what's Miners done for us? Nothing, unfortunately, you know. It's sad because we need them, and they got, as you know, they got squeezed out of the game. They had to sell, sell to their competitor for pennies on the dollar, you know? I just wanted to be, to know that 100% of the people that we talked to signed it. There wasn't one person that said, no, there wasn't anybody that said, we're against this. Talked to Mr. Kraus about this after the meeting regarding the vacation. How do you hold, and maybe you can ask Mr. Schmon if I can't, if the party that's asking for the vacation isn't the party that's developing, how do you hold them to any rules as far as the site plans, change orders, anything like that? Like, once they break ground, you know, and they change it and say, oh, we need to, you know, we're going to make a little bit bigger, we need this permit, we're going to put this in the back, we just thought of it. I mean, it's done and over.
They would still have to go through our building official.
Understand, but once you, you're in it and they're, you can't, you're not going to back down. I mean, they're going to build it because they already got the, basically the passer to do it. One question that we, a big question is why, why isn't the group that told us on camera on May 6th, 2019, that we're going to develop this site, why aren't they the ones that are developing the site with the vacation application? If they're not going to develop it, why isn't it just sold? And the next party who wants to develop it, why don't they go through the process? Because I don't think you're going to be able to hold one party, because one party is going to get it vacated, the other party's building, and there's going to be a transfer ownership. Once it transfers, I don't think you have much legal ground to stand on, once it's gone.
Please.
Mayor, just to interject a comment, I believe that that's the reason why the council talked about having a developers agreement prepared, so that the city's interests would be protected in this effort. And any agreement would also put responsibilities and obligations on the other party to fulfill, and those can also be assigned to successors to the property too. So those would be the issues that we look at in crafting that development agreement to make sure that the public's interest is prepared and protected as part of that preparation, so.
Okay, thank you.
What's the penalty if they don't follow it though? Will they just say, you know what, we're going to move forward this direction? Isn't really tough to have any recourse, correct?
Mayor, it depends on what the, there's penalty provisions in any contract, and we can stop the project if that's something that's necessary. There's a number of things, and that's what we have to review with the city attorney and craft as part of a developers agreement, which would be something that would be before the full city council and a public meeting at some point in the future, before the project actually commences.
Mr. Deech, Counselor Deech, last week asked, I think his name was Dave, asked them if they're going to have diesel pumps, he said, yeah, we're going to have high-flow diesel pumps on the outside. I don't know if you guys know much about high-flow diesel pumps, what high-flow diesel pumps attract is big trucks, and when you have a lot of parking in the back of the facility, which this facility will have, they're going to be parking back there, and they're going to be running all night, and you're going to hear, probably get a lot of complaints from landowners, because you're going to hear this from six or seven trucks running steady. The reason we know that is because we've got a trucking company ourselves, we've got six trucks that run all around the country, and you've got idle laws in New York, Pennsylvania, where they can't idle, or they're limited idle, but there's loopholes, temperature, which we've obviously got the cold side of it. If they carry pets with them, they can run their trucks all night long, they park along the streets, they park anywhere they can get in, because with the new e-logs, when they hit 11 hours of drive, they have to stop, there's no fudging it, there's no moving around, there's no driving to a better location, you're parked, you're stopped. So unfortunately, you're going to get several, well, lots of calls from local landowners within probably a three-block radius, because they're going to hear that rumble through the night. The other thing Jim touched on was a piece of the pie. We talked about gallons last time, 6 million gallons, we can break it down to simply eight pieces of pie. Jim said he's going to start up again, so say there's eight people at the table, Jim's coming back, or Holliday's coming in, you don't know, however you want to phrase it, so there's nine people coming to the party, well, there's only eight slices. And then if you bring in a big guy, Circle K is only putting in two pumps, if Jim's there, they're actually putting in 10, but again, they'll have better traffic flow because they're, it's brand new and they can set it up the way they want. So now this one guy's eating four pieces of the pie, so there's nothing left for the rest of us, just in simple terms, if you will. Another question they had, from the, from the public, if you will, is, and it didn't come up in the meeting, is Circle K buying all the property? Or is it being surveyed and then NBI keeps the back half to do something else with? Because I know that car wash came up, and for some reason, he said that the climate doesn't work. Obviously, we know that it works, we used to have one, Orton's have one, Keep has one, Holliday in Virginia's got one, so that, that didn't make sense, someone was a little off there regarding it doesn't work here, it works in Canada, because they've got them on their car washes at their locations in Canada. We talked about the local donors, got a statement here, I guess, to read. It comes, actually comes from you, Mr. Mayor, from a public statement on June 1st, says, "With great power comes great responsibility. This motto's framed my entire life, a quote from the pages of Spider-Man comics. The concept is so simple, yet it takes a lifetime of learning to live up to it. I will always be the voice of those that need to be heard, I will also stand up for those who are being disrespected." Last week with the vote against basically the business owners, that was pretty disrespectful. We employ a lot of people, we pay a lot of taxes, we generate a lot, create a lot of sales tax, and to not listen, if you will, to the room, the room was represented by one person for, one person against, a bunch of paperwork against, and it was just disregarded, in my opinion. With COVID-19, yeah, you're right, some other people should have came, I thought they would have came, or more would have spoke up, but a lot of them didn't, they just didn't want to be in the chamber office, they thought, some of them thought they weren't going to make it because they'd be at capacity, so it wasn't worth driving down, other ones just said, I'm not going in there with a bunch of people, which is understandable. The last statement that you've got here, Mr. Mayor, says, "I stand up for our business community who are facing unprecedented challenges. I stand up for our family, friends, and neighbors that are being denied equality." Now, obviously, this was for something else, but I mean, the bottom statement that we stand up for the business community, we're not right now. Again, that's a nice piece of property, there's other things that we can put there that will generate tax dollars, it's not, if this business doesn't go here, it's going to sit there empty indefinitely for the rest of our life. As you mentioned, Paul was doing a good job, I'm sure he can find something to help out, which would be nice, you know, to help out other local people that have property for sale, commercial, when we were looking for property for our trucking company, we contacted him, he wasn't able to find anything that fit out, fit for us, but I mean, that's what we went to just to see what's available, you know, for the size we needed. Again, we, family, friends, and neighbors, we've got kids that go to school together, corporate, the people, those corporate stores don't, they just send up somebody to run the store, they don't even know who we are, we're cheering for your daughter, you know, whatever she does, you're cheering for my daughters at basketball, I mean, we work together, and this, this just seemed like we're working against one group. And you are, there are citizens for, they don't understand maybe the repercussions that are coming later, but I mean, everybody wants to see something new and shiny, I mean, that's, we all do. But is it worth it? I don't know.
Well, Matt, and one of the questions that I asked at the last meeting is, that property has sat vacant for two years since it had been demolished, it's just been sitting there. This is the first person that's expressed interest into moving it, and if you or anybody else wants to, wanted to go to that property, that opportunity has been there. Would this council, and I asked the question, would this council turn down a local person to improve upon that property? And the answer was no.
But that's technically not true, because there was a purchase agreement talked about prior to the demo of that site.
Not that I know of.
Well, that's what I was told last week after the vote, that this has been sitting there for 18 months.
Were you with who?
With the same company.
Oh, Circle K?
So...
I was unaware of that, but again, if, if, we have, I, I, this is difficult, because I totally understand where you're coming from, but we also are at a point where we need to grow and we need to have vacant properties filled, and it's just a vacant property on the side of the road.
Correct, but you guys can choose what goes in that location by your vote, and unfortunately, that's something that's directly going to compete with several others that are going to, like I said, put us out, so you guys are just doing a 53 beautification project with the road, now you might have a full, huge corner sitting empty, you might have another corner sitting empty with the brand-new, you know, boulevard, if you want to call it, right in front, it's not going to look good. The problem with our locations is their, ours is small and that one's odd-shaped, so I mean, what's going to fill those? Nothing. So we're going to be sitting there with a corner emptied, now, the demo policy's changed, so we're going to demo it ourselves, unfortunately, but that's, that's the other thing, when you're, when you're an individual, not a corporation, you take chances, there's been several chances taken, some are good, some are bad, it's hard when you get beat down by your own city, by some corporate giant, and the, and the thing that, I don't know if you guys caught, probably should have, or did, it was recorded, is when he said that he would not be interested in this property without it being vacated first.
I, I...
That's, he could do the process that our locals are doing, but they won't, they won't take that chance, they won't, they won't take that chance on you guys voting yes or no, they're not willing to do that, but you guys are willing to vote for a party that's not developing it to move it forward, which doesn't seem, it doesn't seem right that the party that's not developing it is getting it vacated.
Thank you. Evan? Yes? So, the question, the question for those online, or that are listening at home is, the question was, how would the business owners be handling it if there wasn't an alley vacation, and it was just a conditional property being sold?
We deal with it as such, but this, the way it's being presented right now is, they're being given a, not an unfair advantage, but an advantage, because they're not the ones, excuse me, that are doing the legwork. They're not interested in buying it as-is, he said that right here in the queue in the front, which I thought was odd, kind of expected that answer, though, but he said, we're not interested in basically doing the work to get, or take the chance. Now, with small business owners, the 50 that signed, they all took chances at one time to get where they're at. This guy's not, they're not, they're just coming in on a silver platter, and here we go. So, that's all I've got to say. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
And Matt, I thoroughly appreciate your civility in having the conversation too, because we've lost that somewhat as a community. I have nothing else, is there anybody else in the audience that has anything to come forward? All right, hearing none, we will adjourn.